All right, call the meeting to order, roll call. Rod?
Here.
Leah? Here. Jim?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a volunteer to read the mission statement?
At Mount Wharf area, school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Thank you. All right, moving on to two. Two is approval of the agenda. We're going to move seven B up after three A so that we can make that a little bit quicker for some people that are joining us tonight.
Motion approved with changes.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to two B, approval of the September 19, 2022 board meeting, regular and executive meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Okay. So motion by Leah, seconded by Carly, further discussion.
Yeah, they left out the least important board member on the roll call portion.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
You mean yourself.
Myself. I was gonna ask who, then the next question. Was it on the executive or was it on the regular?
So on the regular.
Okay.
Executive.
Sorry about that.
Well, that's okay.
Are you okay, Leah and Carly, with the correction?
Yes.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Carly, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to three, addressing the board, three A is our student spotlight.
Four. We get to launch the school year with just an absolutely delightful little girl. This is Rory. Rory and Rachel, R and R.
R and R.
Tell us a lot about.
Did you know my first name was Rachel? She's like, I said.
Can you tell us all about her?
Well, I have what, Ms. Wycheck. So Ms. Wycheck is here in the white shirt, first grade teacher. Our kindergarten teacher is here too, Ms. Johnson. She's got a little cheering section here. So what I do is I ask any staff member, from our paraprofessionals to our teachers, tell me about kids who are doing great things, and they nominate them for our Board of Education Spotlight. And then we talk about those nominees. We could not bring Rory to you today. From the moment she walked in as a kindergartner, Rory just follows the group plan, does everything asked to do the first time. She listens to adult directions and is constantly helping others. So go to those who need reminders or need an extra minute. She's so patient and kind and thoughtful and helpful. A perfect example of what an amazing biking she is. She gave up a color of Domino's during math workplaces when another student really wanted that color. Just another example of just her being so kind and thoughtful about others. She shares some materials if there are students who do not have them. She lets other students have a turn even before she does, and she's a wonderful, selfless student and a team player.
Can we give a round of applause? Can you rock your beautiful family with us? Can you introduce them? That's okay. That's okay. Hi, Mom, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Good. And who's that beautiful future biking on your lap?
This is me, Rory's younger sister.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. And Dad?
Yes.
Would you guys be willing to pose for a picture with us? And could we even include, it looks like her best friend is also here tonight. And you tell us who your best friend is.
Ila.
Ila. She's so proud of you too, isn't she? Yeah. And do you think all of our teachers and staff could join us in that picture with Mom and Dad? And wonderful. What do you say we do that over here? And you know, we have a Board of Education liaison to the primary center, and that's Ms. Carly Fisher. So what do you say we all get a picture together? Can you do that over here, please? Thank you.
Oh, jeez. Where's the safety? So because of the parts, your sheath or your screen where you have to.
All right.
All right, so now we can move on to seven B. Consider revisions to policy 653.1, free admission slash passes to athletic events preferred by the finance committee.
Good evening again, board members. I'm so pleased to recommend to you tonight an idea I wish quite frankly I had thought of. I routinely have an opportunity to visit with my friend, Mr. John Berryman, who's here in the audience tonight. John and I often find ourselves at McDonald's together and have a little coffee clutch. And he said to me one day, you know, Steve, would it be possible for the school district to provide free admission to service men and women, active or retired? This is a brilliant idea. Why couldn't we thought of doing that? So thanks to John's good work and his continued advocacy, and you can see here tonight just a number of people who have represented our country so beautifully for the gifts that we've all enjoyed. I hope that you will continue to consider the recommendation that's been passed on through the committee you see noted.
Okay, first reading. So if somebody would like, well, we can't pass it on the first reading since Jessica's not here tonight. So I guess we'll just go to discussion.
You will see here tonight, really, the only item that's been changed in the current Board of Education policy is to reflect that it really says it's not just school district members, but individuals, and then adding all our veterans and active military personnel who would have access to any event, not just WIAA events, but also to concerts and the like, anywhere there might be charges. The only difference would be when the event is like a sectional or something like this. That's when the WIA takes the gate. But when it's school district related, we'd like the board to please consider that. Might we be comfortable in just asking if there's any member of our audience tonight who'd be willing to say a few things if they had any ideas?
Sure.
So good evening again. John, could we maybe even do some introductions of these main casting leaders?
I'm terrible at names and introductions. Let's all introduce ourselves.
That'd be a great idea.
I'm John Berryman.
I'm Steve Dumas.
Wayne Sutter.
Michael Pennant.
Don Hurd.
Marice Gendry, class of 94.
Rebecca Turner.
Gary Frisky, class of 66.
How fortunate we are for your leadership and grateful that John was kind enough to bring this to our attention. To President Rothmer is kind of, good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good. We were just introducing ourselves.
Let's go with.
Joe, nice to meet you. Welcome. President Rothmer was just mentioning, we have a board policy that says that policies may be approved on first reading if all board members are present. Unfortunately, we had a board member who couldn't be here tonight, and she sends her regards to you and apologizes for not being able to attend. Nonetheless, we expect that the board will be able to take this up as a formal action at their very next meeting. So it's a small token of appreciation for you and your gifts, and the fact that it's Board Appreciation Week, we have some refreshments here for you, including veggies, and then if you're like me, you're a cookie monster, you wanna have some cookies here, allow us some juice, please do help yourselves. We're just so grateful that you're here, and thank you so much for all that you've done.
Steve, as usual, I got one thing to say. On behalf of all veterans, I don't know if even all of you are aware of the amount of help we've had building that Veterans Memorial by the schools. The art class several years ago provided us, we actually went in and talked to them about the logos on our shirts. We picked out two different logos that they designed, and it was a class project. Each of the 17 members submitted a example of what they want, and we actually talked about it and picked out, we actually let the students pick out which ones they liked. And it was very successful, and we just can't thank you enough for that. But in our initial planning of this memorial, I actually was at an eagle sculpt, where you select the eagle sculpt, and there was a student there, and his name was Matt Thompson. And he, during that, said he was gonna be an architect. And I told him I was bringing a project to the tech ed teacher, and that you tell him you want it, and he took it. And what he did was took the sketches and the concept of that Freedom Tower, which actually came from a candle holder my wife had, and we incorporated an extra pillar in there. And he provided us with actual architectural design, all the shop plans, the drawings, everything, and a 3D file, which was instrumental in doing the video and the formation of every tribute on there came from that. So the students have a big investment in this, and they've been behind us all the way, the school has, and we appreciate that.
It's the least we can do in support of all that you have all done for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I'd like to add to that. When we had our grand opening, one of the first people I contacted, I said to Dr. Stilano, we don't know how many people are coming, we don't know what we're gonna need for transportation, we don't know what we're gonna need for seating, we don't know what we're gonna need for chairs. Dr. Stilano and his staff, Dave and others, you know, were right there, ready to help instantly, and just there was no questions asked, and we appreciated that as well.
People doing heavy lifting to make sure that we, right, did those, Rowan just recently rename Veterans?
Veterans Memorial Park. I can't forget all that Will Jansen did also, because he has constantly been with us all the way.
We're gonna miss him. Yeah, we are in the field right here. Thank you, and rest assured, we'll follow back up with you all once the board takes a formal action. Please do have some treats.
Cookie monsters.
Grab a cookie.
There you go.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll see seven B revisions to policy 653 back next time. All right, I will go back to three C's.
Couple of items for you, board members. First, this is School Board Appreciation Week from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. On behalf of our school district, our community, we thank you for accepting the call to serve. A very busy job nonetheless, but a job that we know you care so deeply about, you have a high sense of mission in it, we know that in all that you do. Thank you so much. We also just came off of homecoming last week, and I think by all accounts, homecoming was a real success. From the parade to the different days the kids got dressed up, I think there was actually an Adam Sandler day, kids got to dress up as Adam Sandler, that was just the cutest thing, to the dance on Saturday night. Boy, was it a real treat. Our work continues, though. You may have read in the newspaper, neighbors helping neighbors, their cupboards are pretty thin right now, there's not a lot on there. And so Club Interact, which is a service club, is sponsoring a drop-off event on Sunday, October the 16th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for people to drop off any goods or materials that they'd like to donate, provided they're not expired. We would be welcoming that at the intermediate center in the bus loop there that day. It will have some promotional materials. Matt Geiger's been kind enough to connect with us about writing a nice story about that need. It's a follow-up to a piece that his team did back on September 8th edition of the Mount Wharf Mail. So lots going.
What's the timeframe set at?
11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, October the 16th.
Perfect, thank you. Board members, any other school news? Leah?
I have two. So PTO is still doing Bucky Books, so if you need one, please get one. Also, on October 14th, we have our costume ball. It is $5 for family, and we are also doing donations for Neighbors Helping Neighbors. So we'll have some bins out for people to donate stuff that night as well, and that's from 6:00 to 7:30 at the IC.
Thank you. Other school news? All right, move on to three C, citizens' comments. All right, seeing none, we will move on to four personnel transactions. Anything of note in our personnel transactions tonight?
Yes, two items, board members. First, there's an addendum to tonight's document, and please allow me to extend a note of gratitude to Luanne Spinell. Luanne has been with our school district since 1996. She's getting ready to retire, as you'll note on that list. She started as a paraprofessional with us, and then in 2007, moved into her role as a supporter of technology needs in the district. When we instituted our Chromebook program here, she did an extraordinary job of developing a system to keep track of them, as well as any repairs that might need to be done. Word has it that she's getting to retire into South Carolina with her family, and of course, she's deserving of nothing but the very best. Congratulations to Luanne.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five, consent agendas, or anything anybody would like to pull out?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Leah to approve the consent agenda, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our discussion items, our first discussion item will be our committee member reports. We will start with Adam Mertz with Building, Grounds, and Transportation.
Sounds good. I was a little bit tardy for this one, but I'm relying on Dave Reed's excellent minutes pass along what we talked about there. We, one of the big items that I know that has been, was the top line in the transportation update, just the work that Karen has brought, her experience at the district in helping out with the coordination of all the transportation. I know that's been a big boost over there. We, I know we lost one bus driver last week, but we had a recent hire that I saw in the personnel report, Mark Schilling, who I just saw today, put together a wonderful piece for a local NBC affiliate about what it's like to drive a bus and really cast the opportunity in good light, and hopefully that prompts it to other people to give it a shot. Building the grounds, I know that we're still struggling with staffing, the number, and I just saw this here, I joined right after this was discussed in that meeting, down six full-time evening custodial team members, it's a big number. Again, the team just kind of scrambles and figures out a way to get things done, which is a testament to them, but would love to see that changed, so there's not so much stress put on that group. And last item of note that will be popping up later in the agenda was just discussion about the purchase of the Halo detection devices for the school, school buildings.
Questions for Adam? Jim?
I would just like to add to Adam's report there that, just to inform everyone that our bus build-out, our new bus is on pace, will be built, are being built right now and should be delivered sometime in November or very early December, so that was discussed.
Thank you. Other questions for Adam? Hey, Jim, we'll move on to the finance committee report.
Sure, so the finance committee, we met on Monday, September 12th, so it has been a little while here. In our meeting, we just briefly reviewed the budget calendar for 2023, and just all got on the same page there. And then, as we all remember, last year, Scott took on the task of updating many policies, so we got back to that. Scott reviewed three policies that he shared with us, one of those being what we just discussed with our members. So we'll bring those to the full board here very shortly. Our next meeting is until October 17th.
Thank you. Jessica's not here tonight, so.
I'm doing it.
You're doing it. Great. Thanks, Lisa. I mean, Lisa. Leah, I don't know what I was doing there.
It's all right, Debbie.
Thanks. Oh, no, I've been called Debbie before.
All right, so we met.
And I just.
We met September 19th at the 18-plus building, where we got a tour, which was very cool to see. There are still parts that kind of look like the jail, but it's getting better, lots of paint going up. We had a COVID update, there's a lot of increased cases, but hospitalizations are stable, and the bus garage is still getting steady use, it sounds like. We had a presentation by the Bridging Brighter Smiles. If you don't know, they come in and do like teeth cleaning and checkups for kids who might not have insurance other ways, and there is a document linked in our minutes with more data. We had an equity update, Nehemiah, well, it was starting next week, so that would have been this last week. So that work is starting up again. We also talked about the Halo system, which we'll talk about more here in a little bit. The Mental Health Coalition is back up and running, they met that same week, so they'll be meeting again regularly, and we talked about policy 422.1 on foreign exchange students, which we will be discussing again tonight, and our next meeting is October 24th.
Thank you. Sorry, questions for Leah? All right, we move on to six B, overview of our transition program. Welcome.
Thanks, glad to be here. Just wanted to give a quick overview of our transition program. We did do a tour last week during the SAR, a couple weeks ago, as we're transforming it from the old police station into our kind of school building. As you may or may not know, students with disabilities or who have an IEP can remain in our school system until the age of 21. And so after they've met the four-year requirement of high school and they've met their requirements, if they're still working on goals such as life skills, work development, training, they can remain in the program for the next, until they turn 21, and they get to stay that full year after they turn 21. And that's what the transition program is really focused on. So if you'd come to the site and check it out, it looks kind of like a living room, it has a kitchen, it has different sensory areas, things that we'll work on in the future, our washing and drying clothes, making beds, all of the things that you want an individual to do when they get out in the world, post-school. And so those are the skills that we're still working on and teaching. And so we have, right now, we currently have three paraprofessionals and a full-time teacher slash coordinator of the entire program, supporting the students. Most of the students do attend the program, but a lot of them are working in jobs and are in-job placements, but still meet with a teacher like maybe once a week or check-in to receive extra services or support through that job. So a lot of it is coordinating with DVR, a lot of the services and supports as well, making sure that the overall goal is that, so when kids turn 21, they have a job that they're successful in, a job that they like, and that we have all of the supports, whether that's housing, residential or on their own, they have the supports in place, as well as the job coaches that are aligned through the job organizations and companies that are in this area, to be able to support them once we're done. So that's kind of where we're at, and we were currently, before COVID, we were actually out of the Driftless Historium. We used kind of that main meeting area, and then we did a lot of volunteer work for them as well, but that just didn't work post-pandemic, and then also kind of the needs of the kids kind of presented, some of the things were a little bit more breakable in the Historium. And so this is a perfect site for us, being in the community, right downtown, and disconnected with the high school, which is what we want, because they're not high school kids, and we want them to have a feeling of independence in some of those areas as well.
Thank you. Questions for members?
Right now, how many people are enrolled right now or on a regular basis?
A regular basis attending the program is six, and we have about six other students who are kind of site-based, so. What's important to note, and Sarah kind of mentions it, every year when she does graduation rate, because these students actually count as not graduating, and so sometimes our graduation rates look lower, but we say, but like, they met the criteria, they're still coming, this is because of this group of students that are in here. DPI hasn't quite figured it out to not make them part of that, so it does look a little bit lower, and that does get brought up in the data, but there's the connection, right?
So right, it sounds like that location is great. What are some challenges to that location? What would you like to see different?
Yeah, I mean, the challenge is that it's an old police station, right? So it's not, it's, we've cleaned, professionally cleaned all of the carpets, but if, you know, Leah was there, they don't really look that clean. There's no windows, so that's, you know, not the greatest, so there isn't a lot of ventilation. When she said it kind of looks still like a police station, it's because like the hooks are on the walls from where the, you know, where you were handcuffed to during that, you know, it's still the interrogation room, even though it's our sensory room. So we painted it, we make it look a lot happier, we've got happy signs, and it looks a little bit different, but it's much older, and it doesn't, you know, we don't have a stove because they don't have the hookups. We do have handicap accessibility, which is really nice, but the washer and dryer, we'll have to go to the high school to have some of those services, because they just don't have the hookups.
And it is very segmented, like you have one room, and you have another room, and you have a hallway. You do have the nice big, like, kind of dining-ish area with the living room-ish area, but otherwise it is very self-centered.
Yeah.
How long do we have access to that building? Do we have a contract on that?
We have a contract for a minimum of two years, and then it will be for, yeah, possible negotiation on both ends, right? If we want to continue with it, but they also, it's through Jeff Grundle, he also might need it for a different source, you know, if he wants that building to still exist, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, moving on to six C, long-range facility and operational planning issues updates.
Good evening again, board members. We have launched our referring website. Simply, when you get to our district's website, you'll find a couple of banners, and in effort to demonstrate to our community that we're looking at both our operational capital needs, a viewer could just click onto the appropriate box and learn a little bit more about the work that's being done. There are a number of town hall visits, one of which I'll be heading to in just a moment over in the town of Primrose, but maybe just to give you just a little update as to where But maybe just to give you just a little update as to where we are with the operational referendum, we have two videos that have been produced and are in the process of finishing the editing and would be released this week. One video is in reference to the why behind an operational referendum and why they're so common in the state of Wisconsin right now. And then the other is what is the vision for carrying us forward through this operational referendum? The details about Mount Corum's need for this to be put on the ballot. So those will be released later on this week, and we're going to continue to get messaging out to our community and answer questions. There will be a virtual town hall forum that'll take place on Thursday evening, October the 20th. And that's been pushed out multiple times to our families, but you can also find it here. On the capital side, we continue to have our Facility Steering Committee meetings. I think we're pretty ready for meeting number four, maybe, and that'll take place this Monday night, October the 10th, right here in the middle school. So far, as you've been reading the minutes, but maybe for those who are listening in tonight, we have visited the ELC and the primary center for purposes of taking a tour and identifying some potential needs. The committee is winnowing down and distilling the ideas from the community survey, as well as some of the observations they're making through their, their visits, and are preparing to make a recommendation to the board on Thursday, or Wednesday, November 2nd, I think it is. It's a Wednesday night at 6:00 PM at the, at the district office. Ultimately, as you'll see attached to this week's, excuse me, this meeting's agenda, some work we're doing on the backside of this to plan a survey. We mentioned the last time that we spoke about the operational referendum, that we would definitely want to follow back up with our community around the potential capital needs. And you can see a schedule that we've developed with school perceptions with the purposes of, if the board elects to move forward with a referendum on a capital side of the House, to be prepared to make that decision later than January the 30th, as that is the timeframe that we have to make an April 2023 ballot. Now certainly if the board and the committee don't come to some understanding as to what might be needing a capital referendum, there's always an opportunity to do that in April of 2024. Suffice to say, part of our vision for use of either the ELC or the PC as a potential district office as part of a solution would be to take in programs like the 18-plus program and develop new programs within our community that could possibly bring some revenue streams to our district. We're just very eager to share the details, and you can probably get a flavor for what the committee is already recommending through some of the meeting minutes. In addition to the middle school meeting, there is one more meeting that'll take place with this Facility Steering Committee, about 40 strong, often on people who are participating. And that will occur, I believe, on October the 26th, and that is at 6:00 PM back over at the high school. And the purpose of that meeting is for us to talk about any potential fieldhouse and/or pool needs within our community, and then sharpen the, the thinking around what that might look like, if at all, for a recommendation. Lot going on, but good stuff, good stuff. May I answer any questions?
All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our action items. Our first action item, actually our second tonight, but our first on the list, would be to consider revisions to Policy 422.1, admission of foreign exchange program students. Mr. Johnson, back again.
Yeah, exciting. So this is, uh, updates that were recommended by our legal counsel. The biggest piece to this is that for us to have a foreign exchange student grant or, so they don't have to wait, pay tuition, they have to hold a G1 visa. And so that's the biggest piece in it that needed to be in there for, for the law. The other pieces were, just want to say it's in pursuant to federal law. We also took out the high school, because we could get more students who belong, you know, who want to come in that aren't high school age. And then we would allow, we would admit, the district is not allowed to admit more than five full-time students a year. So that's kind of our limit.
And what type of visa is it again?
Uh, J1.
Questions, comments, board members?
Second half.
First reading.
Oh, yeah, that's right, she's not here, sorry. My name's Jacob.
So we will see this back here next time. If anybody has any questions or comments, feel free to bring this up right now. All right, thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 7C, consider removal of board policy 684 audits. Mr. Deacon, what's your idea for this?
Thank you, one of my favorite topics, actually. It really is, actually. Steve looked at the board, so I didn't hear him, he had to leave. So the finance committee at its last meeting in September reviewed three different policies, the first one you heard about earlier this evening. This audit policy is the second one I reviewed at the finance level. The recommendation from the School Boards Association is actually to remove this policy in its entirety from the policy book, if you might think, especially in my world, I ask myself like, well, gosh, that's one of the most important things we do, how, how in the world, and why would we consider doing such a thing? And so I brought the school board's comments on this particular policy, and they actually strongly considered repealing the policy. It says, while nothing in this brief compliance-oriented policy statement is materially deficient, the policy also does not provide any meaning to what the law currently requires, which is every school district across the state has an independent audit every summer after the fiscal year is over. And to go so far as to say that relying on, on state law obviously is mission critical, but the reality is, we work directly with DPI, and DPI makes sure that every single school district in the state has an independent audit. So upon the recommendation from the School Boards Association and that discussion at the finance committee, the recommendation would be to remove this policy in its entirety from the policy book. First reading, of course.
Thanks for that. Yeah, I was a little concerned, but I understand, so it's already in law, so we don't need to have a policy for it, because it already exists in statute. Board members, comments, questions? All right, thank you. See this back here next time. And now we'll move on to 7D, consider revisions to board policy 690, school properties disposal.
So we actually are making quite a number of revisions here. I'll put up the, the redline version up on the screen here. The most noteworthy items to address is actually that the policy as it was written was actually not consistent with state law. And so the School Boards Association, of course, recommended that we make updates to reflect what we should be having in our practice. And quite frankly, it's regarding the powers of the annual meeting. The legislature, I'm just going to read, the legislature removed the power of the annual meeting to authorize the transactions of district property. Rather, in current law, it's the power of the Board of Education of a school district that has the right to transact property. And so that's something that Dr. Slender and I discussed already in terms of when we approached future annual meetings, but that's the most noteworthy piece is that, again, it's not the annual meeting that provides that power in terms of dealing with transactional property. The Board of Education automatically has that power currently. So that was an important piece to update. The other items have to do with selling items in our district. The only items that we bring to sale that are achieving value is our 12- to 13- 14-year-old school buses. And we usually bring one to two to auction a year. Sometimes we'll get something as small as, you know, a couple thousand dollars, up to maybe five or six or seven thousand, depending on its useful life. But we didn't feel, at the administrative level, and then our discussions at the finance level, didn't feel that it was meaningful to address selling major items of value and minor items of value, because it's just not something that we're in the business of doing.
Board members, any questions, comments?
You know, by the way, this thing is working, it just rubs me the wrong way so badly. We shall dispose of surplus or obsolete real property. Who determines if, we sat on property that no one used for, I don't know, 15 years? Was that technically surplus or obsolete, and we should, shall have disposed of it? Like, I don't know, it's just weird, worded weirdly, but I find that it's.
Should you change "shall" to "may"?
I, I, it really bugs me, like, we shall, like, oh, oh, we might, we may, but "shall" bugs me.
So would you like to change "shall" to "may"?
Yeah, I really would.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I think the point is that we, if there's not, if we're not using it, if we have no use of it, then we ought to monetize the value of it and quit paying for its upkeep and, and other things. So we should be compelled to dispose of surplus or obsolete real property. Now you could, you, you might say that we, we should square up some sort of timeline or timeframe or something like that, which, which makes perfect sense to me, but I think we, we absolutely shall dispose of surplus or obsolete real property.
And what's the definite, definition of surplus or obsolete?
Who makes that determination?
This is why this policy bugs me a lot.
So I think the intent behind that word "shall" is that, again, there could be a different word, but the intent is that it's the Board of Education that does it, not the powers of the annual meeting. And that, that's the intent behind the sentence.
Can you even say that we will, but "shall" just. It's not a hill I want to die on, but it really does rub me the wrong way.
Has the authority to? Is that what we're trying to say here?
Basically.
Or to Rod's point, we're trying to say that if property is surplus or obsolete, we get, we have to get rid of it.
Right.
I don't know what we're trying to say.
But again, who makes, who makes the determination on that, what is surplus or obsolete? That is a word, okay.
But, but I, but I, first of all, obviously, we're first readings, so, you know, we can bring, we'll be bringing it back. The intent of the law is that the board does have the authority.
Right.
So to Adam's point, we could certainly make that change to say that the Board of Education, the Board of Education has the authority to dispose.
Well, I think there's another point though, too. Along Leah's lines, and that is, I mean, what are, what are we going to do? Are we, the seven of us going to go tooling around and, and figure out what's, what's surplus or obsolete? No, we're going to do that upon the recommendation of the superintendent. And, but upon the superintendent's recommendation, I think.
Then we shall dispose of it.
Right. Then you can get behind "shall".
Then I can get behind "shall". I can totally get behind "shall", I just.
That's awesome.
So my question would be, should we have reference to the statute at the bottom? If it's a statute that says that we have that authority, should it be referenced in the House?
Yes.
We switched all to know that this policy was adapted before I was born, so it's been written really poorly for a long time.
Please stop.
I couldn't help myself.
So if I'm hearing correctly, certainly reference at the bottom, the state statute that connects to the change. And we can bring it back for a second reading and change the "shall" to "has the authority to".
But I, I think where, I think where my pal Lee and I were headed was that "shall" is okay if we do it upon the, the recommendation of the superintendent.
Or destiny, you have to have or destiny.
Oh.
Well, Debbie and Dave might come to us and say, hey, you should get rid of this piece of land over here.
In that case, I think that, that "shall" is still compelling, as opposed to, I mean, if somebody says this land is obsolete or surplus, "shall" is compelling. I'd like to look at the, the legislation and the statute that's, requires this before we make that determination personally, which we have a second reading, so I can do that.
Okay.
It's just not referenced, so I don't know where to go. We'll get that.
So why don't I do some research on the statute, take a look at what it means, make a determination on the keywords, bring it back, and we'll see where we go.
Sounds great.
And Leah will, Leah will tell us if it works.
Thanks, Leah.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 7E, consider the purchase of Halo systems. Mr. Johnson, once again, back again, coming down and letting us know about those, thanks.
So we have two quotes in front of you tonight. We would like to select the K-12 selection for the Halo systems. Does the board would like a description of what the Halo systems are for? And it was talked about in two different committees, so.
Why don't you just give the background?
The Halo systems will be in all of the bathrooms, and because of K-12, it'll also go in the locker rooms as well, not the athletic locker rooms, but the Fayed locker rooms. They look like a smoke detector, and they signify vaping, tobacco smells. They also indicate key words that we can type in, so what they also promote is that they promote potential if people are talking about guns or shooting or anything of those words, as well as noise. So if we can, they'll do a kind of a standard noise of what it normally looks like in a locker or in the bathroom, and if it gets super elevated, like people are yelling at each other, it texts the principals within the building, so then they can go down and check it out and see if there's any mischief happening. And so it's a preventative tool in terms of safety, and also in terms of tobacco use and of vaping or just smoking, or marijuana as well.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Do we have to put a sign outside, like, the bathrooms and locker rooms that say that this room is monitored by a Halo system?
It's not a, like, it's not a video recording or anything, it's just a center voice, so I do not believe so. Because all of those things would be disallowed within the school.
Right. Just curious, like, I think about like parents who come to an event or something, and somebody's talking about something that would normally probably flare something, but, you know, maybe they're talking, I don't know, talking about hunting or whatever, and it flares it off, and they're like, I didn't know, so.
Yeah, it's just giving them a notice to check it out, it's not saying, you know, if they're going to do anything, and if it's, uh, you know, I mean, they probably should check it out, right? And to make sure that everything's safe, but I don't know if they'll even be in the building at that point, right? So, yeah, for a sporting event.
So the, the text then always goes to the administration within that building?
Correct. So this would be at the middle and high school.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see how that works. And how, I guess, how frequent, depending on whatever words are used, you know, just how frequent that might be texted in the administration, I just don't.
Our high school administration has talked to other high school admin who've used it, and they have said that they've had to recalibrate it a lot, especially at the beginning. They were getting a lot of calls, especially as noise escalates, so certain times of the day, certain points, and then you can just make it higher. So you can, you can change it all.
Okay. Is this a program to do that?
We, you program to be what we want it to be. Yep.
Oh, I was just going to ask, is there a way for you to them to like, say all the admins at like a retreat, and you're filling in at the middle of the day or?
Yeah, they can, it's just kind of a computer program, they can change it. How I understand it to be is that, so, you know, I could be on it if I'm covering, we can change it up.
But beside the cost, what are some pros and cons between the two different companies that?
Yeah, so the, the biggest piece is that it's, it's the cost, but also there's a big difference between the number. So if we would do the other company, we could get locker rooms, so it was significantly less amount as well. So it was, where it doesn't look like there's that much difference. So it was, where it doesn't look like there's that much difference, it actually is quite a bit cost difference between the two quotes, because it's not, they're both not quoted at the same amount of Halo system devices. So with the K-12, we can get a lot more, in a lot more places.
Is there any metric effectiveness, you know, of these that they pitched to you or anything you've heard of your discussions with other districts?
Just that they were, it really kind of ended the smoking in the locker, in the bathrooms. That was the biggest piece, that it's just another kind of preventative piece that they felt made a big difference between locker rooms, especially in bathrooms where it had, you can't be everywhere, right? Buildings are big, and so that really kind of stopped some of those, yeah. At least people reporting it, and I know that we've had kids say like, well, we don't go to those bathrooms in that hallway. And then that kind of stuff is, it doesn't stay.
So I assume it's pretty easy to relocate, I mean, just like that, if you stop doing this in this bathroom, they go to this location?
Yeah, that's unintended consequence, right? Where's the next place they're going to, they're going to go, but it won't be in any bathroom. And hopefully the other places within the building will have other cameras that then would be able to catch them. Or it's outside, right? It's outside, and that's probably a safer, you know, I mean, that's, we don't want anybody doing any of these activities, but... And that's also why we changed, you guys passed a few months ago, the school search policy as well to backpacks can be removed in the hallway when we do the dog searches. And so we put in some of those things in place to really deter kids from a lot of this behavior.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Rod, for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You'll have to come back and let us know how that all goes.
All changes, yeah, we'll do, thank you.
All right, that concludes our action items. Moving on to eight is our citizen comments. Okay, any citizen comments tonight? Moving on to nine, our future agenda items are listed as always. Please let us know if you want to have anything added to the agenda. There's a long list there, but don't let this trick. 10 is our schedule of next meetings. Is there anything that we should note? And now we move on to 11.
Most true.
Second. I was trying to beat you. Second.
We should have a rest, I think. True. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are, sir, thank you.